Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Planning Board meeting for Tuesday, July 9th, 2019. The meeting is being recorded and is available for viewing on the Douglas Public Access Channel and on the Douglas website. We'll come to order at 7:01. First item on the agenda is public hearing. Jessica Recor?
Yep.
Application for accessory apartment special permit by Manchuck Road. In accordance with the Donald Douglas Accessory Apartments zoning bylaw in Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 48, Douglas Planning Board is holding a public hearing on the application of Jessica Recor for an accessory apartment special permit. Copy location is 5 Manchuck Street, assesses map 142, parcel 124, Douglas, Mass. Public hearing is being held on Tuesday, July 9th, 2019, at 7:00 PM in the community meeting room, Municipal Center, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. Copy of the application may be viewed in the Community Development Department during regular business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the proposed plan should appear at the time and place designated. Ms. Fox, Jr., Chairman, Douglas Planning Board. Public hearing is now halted. Do we have somebody presenting anything?
Am I supposed to present something? Want a permit for something that already existed before we bought the house?
First of all, I need your name and your address.
I'm Jessica, what you just said, Jessica Recor, 5 Manchuck Street.
Okay, thank you.
We moved in April 2nd.
Okay.
We're literally doing nothing. We just have to go through the formality, I guess, of reapplying for a permit for an apartment that exists. So we're not changing anything. We're not renting it. So we'd just like to continue living in the house as is.
Is there going to be somebody in the accessory apartment?
Yeah, my mom.
Sounds right.
Everything I saw on the top, I don't know which one would you check?
New application.
It's a new application.
So I'm gonna have to get...
For the record.
Checked off.
It's unchecked.
Yeah, it's unchecked.
Mine's checked.
Oh, yeah.
Is it really?
Yeah, he did the original.
Yeah, the original's checked.
Original's checked, okay.
Oh, yours?
No, I just did it.
Oh.
Yeah.
It might have been...
On this bill's is checked.
Yeah. We're good.
I'm making a motion to grant the accessory apartment special permit for Jessica Recor at 5 Manchuck Street.
I'll second that.
First of all, we need to close the public hearing.
And close the public hearing.
So a motion to close the public hearing made by Tracy, seconded by Mike. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion carries. Okay, a motion's been made by Tracy, seconded by Mike to grant the...
Special permit.
Special permit for accessory apartment at 5 Manchuck Road. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The rest of it except for the...
Welcome to town.
Welcome to Douglas.
Thank you.
Went off late at 7:30.
I always forget about that.
Right, neither of these.
But I'm thinking in my head, like, it's like a general...
Next item on the agenda. Aaron Sokrath, 49 Lindberg Ave. Hey, enough stuff away here. If I could show that Aaron is accusing himself. He copied himself, too.
Good evening. My name is Byron Andrews from Engineering. I'm representing Aaron Sokrath this evening. I do have some reduced size copies of these plans. It might be helpful because there's a lot going on on these. So they should be in for everybody. Just one quick note on those plans.
No, you're neat.
Yes.
The chair.
Nope.
Okay.
No, we're good.
Okay.
No, I'll take them. Got next roll. Thanks, Byron.
Just a quick note on this plan. This plan shows proposed buildings, but that's just for illustration purposes for the discussion. The Mylar does not show these proposed buildings. So what Aaron is hoping to do here, he has this property here on southwest Main Street, outlined in yellow. It's about seven acres of land. It has frontage on Lindberg Ave up here and also frontage on southwest Main Street. Official frontage of the property is on southwest Main Street, although his house is at Lindberg Avenue address. So what we would like to do is separate out two buildable lots, two lots conforming with the zoning and frontage regulations. Both lots have an upper frontage and area. You can see that the shape of these lots are a little unusual. That's because of the nature of this land, which is very long and narrow. So we did that to accommodate the area requirements and also to make sure that both lots have sufficient upland area to put a house in subject to. This lot on the southwest end, there's quite a bit of a knoll here. So access in through from the street shouldn't be a problem. It's almost an even grade going in there. There's a side slope, there's significant side slope, but it's an even grade going in. This proposed location for us here has an 11% grade. Obviously, that would be, you know, adjusted when a house was designed. It would be designed to accommodate a lesser grade. The other issues with this is there are two other issues that are significant. One is the wetlands, which are outlined in green. The area on the north side of the green line is wetland. So you can see both lots have a small area that, you know, is inside the lot, meets its own requirements and has area for the house. So we designed that with all these things in mind. The wetlands were the first things that were located so that we could lay out the lots properly. The other issue that's going on is the flood zone. Now, a bit of a background, I'm not sure how in-depth your knowledge is of flood zones. In terms of a hundred-year flood zone, there are two kinds. And one is called a Zone A, another is called an AE. An AE is a zone with an established flood elevation. Those are usually areas closer to town by rivers, things where there's significant infrastructure. And so flood study is done in a specific elevation of the floodline that is established. A Zone A is more of an approximation. FEMA takes existing information. It usually doesn't include a survey. A lot of the times, we use topographic maps, GIS information. And they put an approximate location of flood area. Now, this area here, this approximation is, I feel, not correct in a lot of places. If you look closely at the map, I'm not sure how well it stands out for you. But particularly in this location here in the southwest corner, you can see there's this big knoll here. The flood zone theoretically would cut across the top of the knoll and then go back down the other side. Obviously, water's not going to do that. So we've positioned the house on an upland area here and an upland area here. A higher elevation area, they're both up on the... Now floods, any work in a flood zone requires conservation approval. Obviously, these lots will need conservation approval regardless. Our intent is to apply for letters of map amendment, which is the way you can apply to FEMA to officially remove an area from the flood zone. We have an elevation on this lake in a funding survey that FEMA has approved as out of the flood zone. We're hoping to be able to apply that to this area here and establish a lot closer idea where the flood zone is and apply to remove certain parts of the parcels above that elevation from the official flood designation. Obviously, if that can't be done, then that creates a problem for the building permit. But based on the information that I have now and based on my experience dealing with FEMA, I think it's quite likely that this will be out of flood. I would bet on it. This one, I also think will be out of flood, but obviously, you told me with detailed studies that it's done. It's not something they can do again for sure. But our position is that the flood zone will be dealt with at the time of conservation and that the wetland location and the configuration of lots are enough to fit modest-sized houses in that location.
If I may say, Aaron Sokrath, um, thank you, Byron. We are not going to file with registry until, I'm not going to actually go to sale. I have a buyer, a builder, in both lots, recognizing, you know, the difficulties with these lots, but we both recognize I've done over 800 and something projects and houses and we can deal with this. But the point is, I will not be likely registering the A and R until we satisfy the floodplain zone and conservation. So I'm just going to hold off on sale anyway till all the approvals are set for the builder. You know, if it's meant to be, it's meant to be, but we know what we're doing here and we want to go through this process and continue it. And so we're looking for approval of the A and R and then later on, we'll deal with the other issues, I guess, that can be done at conservation level.
So you're looking to go through the floodplain issue with conservation?
Right. Apparently, that's, well, this is what Byron is stating, that that's done at that level. And I will not be registering these lots and conveying them till my buyer is able to go through this process. So by rightish, not by asking relief from zoning, I mean, from conservation, not, that's not what our agreement is, is that we have lots, we have houses already laid out for this that fit well. And so we know what we're doing. But, you know, the lots are priced accordingly and I'll tell you, whoever lives there is going to have 130 acres of wetlands and conservation, it's not conservation, but just cedar swamp in the back is going to be just a beautiful place to live. So, thanks for setting it up.
How do you get two lots in there?
So, starting on this end, this is the bulk of the lot and this turn over here provides the actual area of 49,000 square feet. That's because of how squeezed the lot is. This lot here, we have a lot more work to work with. But the buildable area really is here. The wetlands prevent any work except for me possibly living in this location. So we basically configured the lots with the houses in mind so that we're able to fit zoning with it. And this is the dividing line between two lots and this is the dividing line between the others. All this land here would be retained by Aaron.
So the bottom lot has some frontage on southwest?
They all have.
The mines are using the yellow.
It is.
Okay, so...
There's a quarter mile of frontage in that whole property.
This lot has 328 feet of frontage and this one has 642.
How's your sight line when you're driving?
The sight line in this location is fine. The sight line in this location, looking south, it's a 30 mile an hour zone and the stopping sight, the ASHTO stopping sight distance is 200 feet. We have 175 feet of sight distance, but we don't quite make what the ASHTO standards are.
Byron, this is kind of like, I don't know, I don't think we've, as a board, have gone through something like this. For A and R, and just from my experience, from other sitting on other boards, for an A and R plan with a kind of floodplain, how does that affect an A and R approval and stuff like that? Because I don't think we've ever experienced that.
Yep.
Yep. The issue with the A and R is access. Plan is simple, okay? So do they show practical access? So for example, if there's a guardrail in front of the lot frontage, they don't have access. Is it a relatively simple thing to remove that guardrail? Yeah. But there's a process. If they don't have practical access today and now, they don't have access. And as part of an A and R, you need access. So the issue with the floodplain, granted, I agree with Byron, the topography suggests that the floodplain would go around those hills, but that's not what it is today. So from my perspective, strictly engineering, the mapping shows that they don't have access based on flooding. There's a limitation to accessing the buildable portion of the lot. Floodplain's one issue. The other issue is the topography. Lots 1 and 2 show, I can't read what Lot 1 says, that's a new number there, Byron.
11 plus minus?
The blue line goes over that.
Yeah. Is that 11?
It's a slow.
Yeah.
Oh, that's a 1% slope.
Oh, that's 1%?
Yeah, it's on the side of a knoll, but it'd be going straight into the knoll. So, you know, you cut a little from one side, fill in the other side.
But you can't, you can't drive off the road there. It's in a hole, you're saying. Off from the road elevation.
No, no, no. It's on a knoll.
Yeah.
But in regards to slopes, basically, the question is, could you practically speak and put a driveway in? If you have a 20% slope there or a cliff or something, obviously, you can't. So you don't have, you don't have access as far as the subdivision control law is concerned. The way I'm looking at this is that you will have access, but you're not going to have too steep a driveway. You're going to have to grade it, but, you know, that's par for the course for, you know, any...
So what's the existing slope for that lot there?
It's about 1%.
Between the road and the buildable portion?
It's like a 1% slope.
Okay.
There's almost no...
So that one looks like it's accessible to the buildable portion. Lot 2 is 11%, and I know the board historically has held kind of like 10% as the boundary line. And then lastly, our local regulations require that the lots be, meet ASHTO requirements for sight distance. And Lot 1 shows 175 feet, whereas the plan refers to 200 feet being the allowable sight distance. So those are the issues.
What, can I ask a question? You said local bylaws, you want A and R bylaw, right?
No, our local regulations require that it meets ASHTO.
Under the A and R?
Under A and R, correct.
Just want to ask which, you know...
Section 3.3.
Yeah, we can put the driveway, there's so much wrong, that we can move the driveway another 30, 40, 50 feet further away. I know it's not showing that now, but during construction, the driveway is going to be pushed further away to increase that over 200 feet.
You think you're going to go to the wetland line on that?
No, we're not going to be in the wetlands, no.
Which way are you talking about?
I'm talking easterly. Is that Byron, what we're talking?
Yeah, easterly is close to the wetland line. You can put a driveway...
50 feet is right on it.
You can put a driveway, you know, against the wetlands, you can actually fill wetlands to go through, to put in a driveway. You just have to have, you have to have, be able to create, thank you, replicate two times as much as you're filling.
But we need 25 feet.
Why don't you try to find that unknown owner?
Well, actually...
On your, on your journey here.
Yeah, actually, this is, this piece here, it's an interesting story. This was listed as owner unknown. And Henry Lane, who knows a lot about the history of the area, was able to find that this was actually not unknown, but there was a specific party that owned it and we were able to acquire it with that information.
He kind of finished it up with that last piece.
Well, we got...
There was no one, no one owned it, there was no one behind. He went back to 1888, what was it, 1788?
1788? Yeah, no, this is from 1800, so 1788.
Yeah, when it was acquired by the car family.
So do you have an elevation on this FEMA line and relative to the one that you think is the elevation from your recent Loma? Where this is showing right now?
Yeah.
Is it really off?
Well, we don't have that information and that's because it's a Zone A. Again, a Zone, a Zone A, the boundary of Zone A is just lines on paper. They don't give you any elevation or anything to work with. Theoretically, FEMA is going to do a study of that particular area and then we'll establish an elevation, but a lot of this doesn't get done because it's, you know, areas that, you know, there isn't a lot of urgent interest in. So this is just, you just look at the FEMA website, this is just a line on their website. So the challenge is to, in a situation like this, is to apply to FEMA with sufficient information that they will either agree that your particular building, your particular area, isn't even close, or that you have a, you've done a study and you have an elevation that's a calculated and reliable elevation for it, and then you put that elevation on it. I expect it's going to go kind of in and out, probably a lot of, close to the lot, close to the boundary of the wetlands, because the boundary of the wetlands is the bottom of the slope. So it's probably going to be on that, above it somewhat, below it somewhat. It's hard to tell. But what we would do is, is we have an elevation that FEMA has agreed is out of the floodzone on the other side. We would bring that elevation down to here, establish the actual USGS elevation here, see how that compares to the elevation FEMA located before that. If that's not enough, then we do a flood study in that area and that's a more involved process. But there's methods to determining this. And we've done a number of these in other areas, both as Zone As and AEs.
So you think you'd be able to push that driveway 25 feet and get your 200 feet of sight line?
I think you could. I would want to check in the field to verify that.
Okay.
We can come back.
And I think that...
I mean, if this is the place where the FEMA needs to be resolved as part of the A and R, and if that's, Bill, if that's what we need to do with this board, then it's obvious we need to withdraw and then come back with that information in place. If it's not the board, then, you know, and then by then, we could probably resolve something on the 200 feet by then, too. So maybe the best thing to do is just...
Yeah, I mean, make it a lot cleaner, a lot easier.
Why don't we do that, then?
Yeah, I mean, you've got compensatory storage, you have no place to put it. You have one insurance.
This was flagged last year, by the way, so once another month, you know, this...
Right, yeah. I think, yeah, I think those are the sticking points. And we have made people improve things so that we can grant the A and Rs.
Okay.
Whether it be like trees removed or...
Right, yeah. Because of sight line.
Inaccessibility.
So as far as the board is concerned, it's the slope for this lot, it's the sight line for this lot?
Yeah.
And the location of the flood zone?
Location.
Yeah, I think all of Bill's comments is what we're looking for. That floodplain is iffy and concom, too, for replication.
Well, we may not have, we may not have to do replication also.
Run off and protecting that wetland. If you're sliding that driveway over, I would try to see if you could cut the... No, 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 the BBW that's flagged there for filtration and stuff. Speaking with my concom hat. But maybe you could cut a tree or something or see what's in the way. I don't know what's over there. Around that corner, is it the corner?
Yeah, we'll see what we can do to improve that.
Find another lot, other owner.
Well, owner unknown, I can just, no one's going to yell at me.
Claim it. Yeah, claim it. That's their own.
Yeah, we'll come back, we'll come back.
Maybe you already own it and you don't know.
Could be, the way things go. How many years? See you in 21 years.
Yeah, we'll have to cut the grass, get some crops.
Well, that turnaround is over there.
Very scary.
Tom's about using that turnaround for school bus.
A little scary.
So, all right, so if you, you want to withdraw for now, then?
Well, I mean, it's pretty evident that we have some things to answer and we're not going to, I mean, it's foolish to do otherwise and I think...
Yeah, you're going to want to know anyway. Even if you got the A and R, it doesn't really matter. You're going to want to know if you're planning two houses in a floodplain, you've got to be one foot above the floodplain elevation building.
Well, these knolls are 10, 12 feet above the wetlands, so certainly, the floodplain's not going to, we'd, the entire country would be underwater if it went that way.
Well, I'll see. Byron will figure it out in four.
So if you want to...
I have a letter, I mean, I can...
And writing.
All right, and we'll make, we'll make a motion to accept the withdrawal without prejudice.
Anything else that he needs on the plan?
I'm sorry?
Anything else we should tell him to put on the plan?
Well, if he's going to withdraw, I suggest doing without prejudice in that we waive the fee for the...
Reapplication. If we say that within a year, because we've had issues in the past on not stipulating a timeline. So within a year.
Within a year.
Okay.
That's fine. I remember that.
Yeah.
I don't know who it was.
You can give a letter to Bill.
It's like crazy.
Okay, thank you. All right, so make a motion?
Make a motion to accept the withdrawal without prejudice for Aaron Sokrath, 49 Lindberg Ave, with the condition that the refiling will have no fee within one year.
Second that.
Motion made by Tracy, seconded by Mike Z. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion carries.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Good job, Byron.
Let the record show that Aaron is coming back to the table.
In about two minutes.
Okay.
You got to look on that other one, see if he withdraws. The next application.
No, go ahead, Aaron, that's fine.
7:30.
7:30 Martin Road is the next one.
Yeah. About short drive. Is that that one? That's the one I had to get back to. We were getting some side drive.
Yeah, why don't we at least run these out, they can take it.
Thanks.
Is this new?
That's just the test.
Yeah, that's new.
All right, 7:15.
No, we got minutes.
That's fine. 77 Martin Road. Is anybody presenting?
Yes.
Tricia Porter.
Hi. You want me to present?
That's easy.
Have a seat.
You just tell us what's going on.
That's it, simple.
I don't have, oh, the Mylar.
Jake doesn't bite.
You're, you did fine with me.
That's all right.
We've got them on our table. You're going to be struggling with that way too much.
Don't just bump it.
No, just, just...
We just want to split 77 Martin Road from the house lot, which is this lot. This one's already split off and one's split, which is this lot.
Okay, so between on which road, Maple?
Maple.
All right, you have 200 feet, you have Zone RA?
Zone RA. The only comment I had to Ron, and I don't know if he relayed this to you, but the existing dwelling does lie within the building setback. It may have an impact on any pre-existing non-conforming status that it may have enjoyed. So if this goes forward, it may have an impact on that conformity of that structure.
How much of an impact?
Well, it wouldn't enjoy the pre-existing non-conforming status. It would be non-conforming.
Unless it's a detached structure. You can't extend the existing...
I'm not an expert, I'm just raising that so they're aware of it.
That's, yeah, and that's mainly for, if they try to do it in addition.
Yeah.
You know, if you try to do an addition under the property, it would have to be...
There was already additions.
Yeah, but that's all.
No more additions.
Yeah, so...
But beyond that, Ron had addressed all my comments and primarily, the issues weren't necessarily about the plan. It was more about the parties involved and, you know, you know, that sort of thing. But that's been worked out, I think we're all set with that, yeah. But the plan looks fine from a, you know, access and frontage perspective.
Number five on your notes.
Which was what?
Sight distance is shown on the property.
Yep, yep. Looks like this, they have 150.
Up on the corner? I can't see that's far.
364.
Which is it? Yeah, but it's, what's it here?
200, surreal, 300.
I think it's just here, but the slope... That's if, if you take the point here, but if the point's here, you've got 200 feet. Yeah, so I don't think that's an issue. Yeah. I mean, and I, this is a, not a very hell, um, this is not a big travel road. Not a lot of travel on Maple Road.
Not yet.
Yeah. Everybody goes the other way towards Franklin.
Yeah.
They don't come off that way, so.
Anybody have any other questions?
Nope. Anybody have any, any more questions?
Make a motion to endorse 77 Martin Road, your quarter.
Mike, you got the mic? Any further discussion?
We started first.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, abstained. Motion carries.
Oh, we have stampings?
Good job.
You need two of these, right?
That was amazing.
Hey, Mike, what was it? It's an A and R.
You need stampings?
Yes.
I know, I know.
Yeah, we need these, Jake.
I want to see this part.
Good job.
Do you still want the example?
Do they have the 200 feet for sightline?
How many of these do you need?
Four.
Yeah.
He's got a couple, I think. He's got one, one, two, no. Look at that.
Perfect.
Pulled it right, they're right there.
Perfect.
Jake, what are you doing, buddy?
I don't know.
Jake, just pull it back up where it was, because they had them perfectly.
Yeah.
No, this is the Mylar, you got to sign the Mylar.
No.
Those are, yeah, those are the... He's going to make a kite.
Paper plane.
Paper plane.
All right.
Yeah, I got to sign that, so.
Even target.
No, we left them up anyways.
Why do we need so many, um, copies for our scanner?
No, that's for, um, different departments.
Oh, 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 you're scanning these in though, now, right?
I will now, yeah.
With the brand new scanner?
Don't the departments just get it as a PDF?
No, they get a hard copy.
And then they toss them.
Yeah.
That's all I know. Paperwork, more paperwork, yeah.
Are you saying you have a motion to reduce the number to one paper copy?
I would say so move, yes, yeah, second.
I'll ask the departments, I'll ask the department what they prefer.
If you're scanning it, yeah, if you're scanning it, and then they can put it in a file.
Yep.
An imaginary file.
It was some state...
Have one source document, and the rest are copies.
Yeah.
It was a public, Public Paper Reduction Act of some years.
Yeah, we threw that away.
Not here, it was a state...
It wasn't a paper multiplication?
It's a fed.
Paper multiplication.
Stamp on all of those.
Tracy, Tracy.
Pulp, pulp multiplier.
With your two letters, you did your initials.
How many of these we have to leave or else?
You need four, you know he's got four.
We've just made a motion to reduce the number.
Right here's two more, right there.
Thank you very much.
Okay, good luck.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Don't take me.
Have these all been done?
No. Did you withdraw this yet?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's okay.
I'm going to open that text from 7:30, and I'll just drop, accept there, the draw.
Yeah.
What happens?
Yeah, we do have to.
You don't have one more?
Yeah, that's what, yeah, we'll close, we'll open the book here and close it, and accept the, uh, application. Can you just pile them all up here, and also them all at the end of the night?
Okay. Here, put this with that.
Nice driveways and...
All that stuff is enough. All right, next item on the agenda. Public hearing continued.
Adola.
Okay, thank you. Living Trust, application for a modification of the definitive subdivision plan 12 and 14 Depot Street. Public hearing is now reopened. Okay, we received the letter.
It's not in my packet, but I'm not sure if she made copies for you, but we did get, okay, so you do have it. Um, we did get a request for withdrawal without prejudice, the, um, modification to improve subdivision.
Those were the discussion on this, we can...
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made by Tracy, seconded by Mike Z. Opposed the public hearing, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, abstained, motion carries.
Make a motion to accept the application withdrawal for Adola Living Trust, 12 and 14 Depot Street with prejudice.
I'll second.
Go ahead, Mike. All right, motion made by Tracy, seconded by Mike G. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, abstained, motion carries.
You rolled across.
This is my space.
I'm sorry.
I'm in your crowded space.
Yeah, I only got a little corner. Actually, you got a least.
It's okay.
Next.
It's a pork chop line.
All right, we're going under discussion.
Frontage.
You want to take these in order, Bill?
Sure.
Yep, okay. All right, under discussion.
Dissolved alternatives.
Medical Alternatives, 120 Gilbo Street. What do we have under discussion?
There should be a letter in your packet, and Tim's here, Fussin' O'Neil.
Yep.
It's right, she wanted copies, right.
Copies and a full set.
I'll keep the full set, take one, pass it around.
What is going on here? Just do it. Done.
Yeah, I gave it to somebody else.
Carbon dioxide.
Talking around, have to have size drawings.
Thank you, need it, they need it.
Take that, we don't need this, right?
Right.
All right. Paper Reduction Act, Mike.
What is the issue here? We're going to find out right now.
They want to add some equipment.
My name is Tim St. Germain, I'm with the engineering firm, Fussin' O'Neil. We represent Medicinal Alternatives at 120 Gilbo Street. So it was, uh, we have a, an existing site plan approval, um, and it was pointed out by the building inspector, Mark Capeline.
Correct.
I think, uh, in May.
I don't know when.
They're about, pointed out that, that there is roof mounted equipment, and that during the Q and A of the site plan approval, we indicated that there was not going to be any roof mounted equipment, so...
Well, the issue was, I believe, the building inspector got some complaints, because during the presentation during site plan review, it was put forth that there would be no exterior alterations to the facility. So, um, the building inspector reviewed the, the complaint, took a look through the files, and agreed with that assessment based on a letter, a comment letter I had made, and the feedback that we had gotten at the time. Um, so, the building commissioner asked that they come back to the planning board and seek our input based upon, this is the, all the changes to the exterior of the building.
Correct.
Um, so, I don't know if you want to kind of quickly go over what those changes include?
And they were all at the roof level?
There's, there's one at ground.
Okay.
Um, it's on an existing pad, so if you go through it, the, um...
I think also at the time, back in May, we were talking about what was going to be up put on the roof, was we were wondering about solar, if I recall. I mean, because I think there was a discussion about put solar on the roof there.
That's right.
Yeah, and it's like, oh, we're not going to get any of that.
For power, yeah. And so, just want to...
That was, that was Mike's...
Yeah.
Right, but that's a discussion, yeah.
That was part of the discussion, was, that's why we were asking about the roof and...
The, so the, the first of the drawings, there is, the, uh, Medicinal Alternatives has leased a carbon dioxide bulk storage tank, um, that is leased from Praxier, general supplier of carbon dioxide. There is an, there was an existing pad next to the chimney on the backside, uh, within the building, buildings, sort of a horseshoe, straight front, front, with a horseshoe in the back.
But it's in the U, right?
It's in the U, up against the building, right next to the chimney. Um, and so if you put it on an existing pad, it's sitting next to a, the electrical transformer.
Okay.
That's where, that is located. Uh, on the next page is equipment, so equipment identified at first HMUA 1 and 2 and MAU 1. Those are makeup air units, um, standard for any commercial building. They take here from the outside in, so pressure coming in, uh, to the building. Code requirement to have makeup air units. Um, they're actually, and I have some photographs, they're actually existing rooftop makeup air units already on the facility. Um, so these are the same type of units that are embedded there.
Are they the same location, or you just...
They're in the, as shown is the location.
So are all these changes already constructed and built?
Yes, yeah. Um, it should be noted that, that the piece we, we didn't talk about was the building permit that went in December of 2017, had this equipment, um, and we received the building permit in accordance with...
Well, we said no outside changes.
Medical permits were all pulled.
No doubt, uh, the, I can address that. Um, the decision didn't specifically say there were no, no exterior improvements allowed, so I'm sure the building commissioner reviewed the decision and didn't see that. I think the new building commissioner, you know, reviewed the file and saw evidence that it was discussed and presented during the process. Okay?
Well, being that one of them is ground mounted on an existing pad within the U of the building, and the others are on the roof, which the roofs are always up for grabs for equipment and chillers and makeup air equipment, it's not, to me, it seems like there's really no exterior elevation changes or, you know, to the...
Well, I think, I think they used it at the time as, as justification for requesting a waiver from doing architectural renderings.
Yeah.
So, so that waiver was granted at the time for the site plan review.
So they do architectural things wrong, this, this stuff, and they get more discreet?
Right, but they're not making changes to window layouts and, you know, brick and exterior facade, just on the roof.
At that level, we're looking at it all.
When were the rooftop units installed?
Yeah, I'm just saying, yeah.
I think the ones that are the air handling units, um...
One and two?
One, two, and three, there's an HM, one and two, and a, and a MAU one. Those units were installed, I want to say in March.
So, so the one on the...
Large of this year, March 2019.
This one here. The HMUA 1 and 2 installed in March?
There was two existing, right?
No, 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 no.
You just replaced the new one?
HM, HMU 1 and 2, as well as the MAU 1, are all new units that were installed in March.
Okay.
There are, they match existing units that are already on the building.
Where are the existing units? Just the one here?
Nope.
That's right.
Is that right? Is that the FH 1?
So the, the existing units, and this is a poor photo, existing units are on that bump out, the, it's a, it's a classic end of...
Which one had been added?
Everything on the sheet.
Okay, everything here is new and all that's...
I thought you said there was a makeup already there.
These are all new.
All new, everything here?
These are all new. There is existing makeup air units on the building.
Okay, so not this one, so you need to replace one with this one?
No, they're all there.
We may, we may have, but because of the age of the building, some of that, there are curves that are already in the roof, but the units had been already removed before I got there.
So you got 16 units up there, and one on the left.
I mean, I'm going to have to review the special permit, see for the necessary mechanicals. I mean, there's no, as far as exterior changes, you didn't build a different facade or anything like that. I think that's the intent of the special permit, but I'd have to see. And when was, when did the complaint come in?
That same time, frankly.
March 2019?
March or April.
I have no idea.
I'm going to go back and...
He came into the building department.
I mean, the zoning enforcement officer would have to deal with the, any complaints that are not meeting the special permit.
Was it a visual complaint or a noise complaint?
Right, and that's why, that's why Mark had asked Tim to come to the board to see if this warrants, you know, a modification to the site plan review permit, or, or if, you know, it's within the scope of what we intended.
Does it say all utilities? I don't even, I didn't memorize the special permit.
No, it doesn't address it.
No?
It doesn't address it.
This special permit does not address anything on the...
No.
No, no necessary utilities for...
Nope. It says per the plan, it references the plan, which didn't include this.
All this, had, yeah, there's none of this showed on, they had planned, nothing. Everything that was on the plan had to do with lighting, exterior parking, the entranceing, with the trucks were going to back in, all that kind of stuff, and absolutely nothing was said about roof stuck on the roof.
Yeah, I don't remember anything either.
No, I think, I think at the time we were talking...
It seemed like college, it was some discussion about when, when they were saying that there would be no clean air and how it would be...
Right, but we didn't know how they were going to do it.
A scrubber or something, I thought.
Was there existing, because right now, there's what, six, five, six, uh...
Six.
Six units there? What was existing, since these are all, all new replacements or...
Well, like you said, when I got there, there was nothing, when we got there, there were curves in certain locations, but there was no equipment on them, so you could see that historically they're made of, might have been something, or I could see a hole through the roof into the inside, but there was no, no equipment there.
Do we have a correspondence from the zoning enforcement official?
I don't, I don't know if Tim does.
There was none, because he's not on the second floor.
Oh, no, no, no.
Tim, do you have any correspondence from the building inspector? He's the zoning enforcement officer for the special permit.
Yeah, other than, we, so, that's Mark.
Yes.
So, Mark and I had the conversation about this, and during the conversation, he didn't believe it was in his jurisdiction, and that's why we created that discussion, or opened this out as a discussion here, to figure out whose jurisdiction this lives in.
Yeah, building permits were pulled, and it says zoning enforcement officer, right, in our special permit, is the enforcer?
Yes.
Yeah, there's no question who, whose jurisdiction it is.
No, I, I think he wants to know if it warrants a modification of the site plan review permit. That's not clear in Tim's letter here.
Okay, because I'd like to see a correspondence from the, the zoning enforcement officer, who is in charge of the project. I'd like to see the special permit that was granted, the verbiage in there, and the plan that was, that was issued. I mean, I don't have anything in front of me that I can make any sort of judgment.
Has your film that was...
Yeah, I mean, yeah, you need those to have the functioning for what your use is, so you have some sort of something saying that we have, we need these, these are necessary to run what we've rented you to run.
It's customary, it's customary to have these on roofs, like, commercial roofs.
That's what I need to see, I, it's so long ago, and that you've got in building permits, and you've got in mechanical permits, there's a, there's a timeframe for appeal, I don't know.
I mean, I, and I totally understand, but you've got to remember, you have 20, 30 fans going on up there.
Yeah.
All right, and you have windows open, you're going to start hearing that stuff, that simple. Have you ever been on a roof with all them kinds of units going?
You asking me?
Yeah, I'm the same.
Commercial architect?
He's saying generally.
You're going to hear this stuff, and a lot of the buildings, they'll put this stuff sometimes two floors down, they'll have their mechanical room with... sometimes two floors down, eleven, their mechanical room, with a lot of their-
With just vents out the top, right, and it offers the sound.
So we're just trying to figure out what we allowed and what we didn't allow to make this right.
Right, so what, my question is, was it a visual complaint or a noise complaint?
We don't have anything in writing of any complaint.
So they don't know, right, how noisy it's gonna be, yeah.
So my action is to go back to Mark, or what?
Tracy, Tracy listed a few things, the decision.
Approved plan, and the approved plan.
The approved plan.
And what it's violating.
And a letter from the building commissioner.
Yeah, and I would say all your permits, because you've got thirty days to appeal a permit. Thirty days.
Who, me, or?
Not when.
Okay.
Not you.
Back when, back when, yeah.
Any individual. So if they were erroneously issued, or like, it's not our place, I don't think. I don't think, right now I can even think about a modification, because I have nothing in front of me to show me that this is a small, small detail.
Addition, plus addition, modification of one.
If it says all a pertinent, you know, devices to get this functioning, I can hang my hat on something, but-
I think it falls under that, Tracy, myself, but I have to see-
I don't have one piece of paper.
Yeah, I don't see it in front of me, so I can't say for sure, but I understood it to be that way, that the facility, the permit was granted by us to build that facility, and this is part of building that facility.
Right, right. That's my take, too.
It's just stuff on the roof, I don't see any modification to the building itself as far as the other wall or something else going on.
Well, the intent of waiving the architectural drawings was that, if you were in a, need an architect to change something with the building.
Right, and likely at that stage, architectural elevations are not showing rooftop units per se, generally, because just mechanical-
Mechanical engineering plans.
Right. And they're not making changes to the facade.
Yeah, and specifically states in the special permit, zoning enforcement officer is in charge of this.
Yeah, but he's looking for us with direction on what we-
I need something in writing saying there's an issue.
Yeah.
I have nothing in writing.
Yeah, right.
I mean, we did talk at, I mean, if I recall about the sole on the roof, we did talk about the air handlers and the air changers and stuff like that.
Was there air scrubbers? Or was that this one?
There are-
Don't remember the word scrubbers.
We talked about noise, noise was-
During site plan review, it was presented, because I was, I was the one that brought up the question on the solar panels, because that, I heard, overheard conversation about that. And it was presented repeatedly that there were no exterior improvements made whatsoever, including lighting.
Yeah, because basically-
Including changing the angles of lighting.
Yeah, around the building, around the building.
That's how it was presented.
The one light bulb that bothered the butter, right?
Right.
I don't remember any discussion in detail at all about, at all, about adding this stuff on the roof and-
But it's customary, so-
And they did have a mechanical-
It might be customary, but it wasn't laid out. I don't care if-
I don't know.
I know, but the core, the core thing on, yeah.
Yeah, but as a board, we don't have the stuff in front of us to-
They don't have that in front of us to-
All right, let's move along, let's move forward.
Now, so say, they have, what's the procedure for them to go through if we want to modify, we'd have to modify the-
Shawson, apply?
Yeah.
They could request a modification to show this stuff, if they wanted to be proactive and just, you know, assume worst case scenario, and I'm not suggesting that's the case, but if they wanted to be proactive, they could say, here's an architectural rendering, this shows all the exterior improvements, or maybe photos or something that quantifies what's changed.
Photoshop.
He'd have to reopen the hearing, notify butters, and again, we have time, because our next meeting's August thirteenth, if you wanted to do that. And then just get it done with.
Yeah.
That's what he wanted to do, or he could suggest that, you know, hey, that's within the scope of the permit, that's been issued, and then we could talk about it next month, or not.
I'm of the mind that it's within the scope of the permit, but if the board feels differently, then-
I am too. I want more info, I need to know this, without seeing the permit.
Yeah, if you guys want to look over the permit again, just-
I think I have the permit, actually.
I'm sorry?
I have the permit.
Yeah, we'd have to get a copy of it, so we can look it over and-
No, no.
Yeah, do you, do you have any comments or questions?
Yes. Who is? I'm little butter, with a single light bulb, yeah. Okay, good. Go by there at night time, that's fine.
Just give me your name for the bracket, so it's recorded.
Scott Duncan, 106 Gilboa Street, and yes, Aaron, you are right, it is normal, but in their site plan review, when they came to you guys originally, no modifications to the outside of the building. I have the original email from going back and forth with Bill. They said it five or six times, maybe even more, nothing on the outside of the building was to change. Everything was gonna be contained inside the building. Regardless of a CO2 tank on the side of the building, that's no big deal. If you go by the building now, if you're looking at the front, you're on the right side of the building, you see three cooling towers, which I assume they've been sized to go even bigger with the space, which is another agenda that probably will come up, because it's oversized for what they have right now. And then, if you're standing in my yard, looking over at their building, you can see all the equipment, everything, on this side of the building, so you're gonna have three giant fans. I don't know if anybody's been on a roof with cooling towers.
I'm sure have.
No.
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 You can't see the cooling, I want to be clear, you can't see the cooling towers from your house.
You can't see them, but you're gonna hear them.
You misled, you could actually see the cooling towers, you can't see them.
No, I said if you're looking from the street to the right.
Right, but the cooling towers are not visible, they're in the back courtyard, they're on the low roof of the building.
They have high roof cover.
No, you can see it from-
Some sort of screen.
Screening could be one of the concerns.
Yeah, I think, well, I mean, I think, seems, he says he can't, you can't see it from his house, but you can, he's worried about Harry, you're worried about the noise.
Worried about the noise, but now we're bringing in, there was supposed to be no outside changes, so now we're bringing in fresh air makeup, which was not even talked about, so now we're gonna be bringing in fresh air makeup, and that's gonna pressurize that building. Regardless of what they say, they're gonna be cleaning the air or anything, you can't deny it, it's gonna be pressurizing the building, and then it's gonna be pushing out those windows in the front of the building, those aren't new windows, those are-
Windows aren't operable.
Yeah.
You can drive by and the windows are open throughout the day.
They can't be under, under our CCC license.
They're open right now, so-
The facility's not operating.
It's gonna-
The windows will be sealed shut under our security and our CCC.
Was that in the site plan, too?
They have to be under the security plan.
None of that stuff, you guys didn't list anything. You basically came in and-
We're gonna, you can talk to the board, you can talk to the board.
No, but real quick, honestly, with the exhaust units that they're putting up on the roof now, it's in, it's listed in here as fume exhausts from the lavatories and the kitchens, fumes, what's gonna be coming from the fumes is gonna be what their product they're growing, which is gonna be exhausted outside the building.
No, that can't be, they can't, they're not allowed to do that.
We already talked, yeah, it's gonna be charcoal, that was all brought up.
That was brought up.
That was.
They're all gonna be filtered back.
Yeah, there's federal and state laws that won't allow that to happen, and so the system they have to put in to prevent that from happening, it sounds to me like this is the system that's going in, like, that you're putting on the roof now.
And then-
And I thought that to be originally part of the scope of the project, that's my feeling.
And then there was a, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, go ahead.
And then at the board of selectmen meeting, somebody from the state came, because the town's timeline for sales in the town was gonna run out, and I brought up the question about, you know, when you have an issue with nuisance or whatever, it goes to the board of health, I remember you guys setting it up, going through the planning board, it does not, it goes right to the board of health, and if it doesn't, the town board of health, and then after that, it automatically goes to the state board of health, or to an attorney, and then further on.
I thought it goes directly to the state, that they're in control of nuisance, the CCC.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The state board of health, not our level.
Right, yeah.
No, that's what, that's what she said.
It was probably come into our board of health first, but it would go directly to the state after that, because I'm sure-
They can't say local board of healths in different areas have deferred this not to be within their jurisdiction because of CCC.
You don't even think that the CCC has taken over, they can't even, you can't even inspect food products.
Screening could be a problem, it's sound deadening.
Yeah, we're getting off the subject now, so what we have to do-
The power, there was also modifications to the power to the building, which was listed that they was gonna be using the existing power to the building in their original site plan review. Now, all of a sudden, we got new transformers, new-
Well, the company, the electric company is gonna maintain their infrastructure. We drove by that pole that was leaning this way, for safety reasons, they have the fix, they have to fix it.
Yeah, but they weren't supposed to bring a new service into the building.
I don't know if they were supposed, I mean, companies update their electrical systems all the time, and I, I can't say whether they're violating anything by updating their electrical.
Right.
If we're gonna-
I'm just going by what the information was, I would give it to you guys.
Yeah, okay, I mean, there's certain things that are done to buildings to-
Let's stick with the rooftops, the changes.
Make them functional, but-
Yep. I mean, I would like to, like you say, see what was this cost.
Yeah, I think we have to, we have to get a copy of the original approval, we can discuss it at the meeting, next meeting, look it over, see if we can find anything that's in violation, what the exact wording was.
Right.
Or just missed, but then do we want the applicant to come, if the applicant, you know, want to come, put a modification?
They want to come for that meeting, we can do that.
Modification?
Um, they would have to reopen the hearing.
First, we have to-
And we had to notify the butters, but-
We have to determine if this is significant enough to-
So not by next meeting, huh?
We can discuss it at next meeting.
I mean, if I remember correctly, at the new school, didn't they, all their units they built, uh-
Yes, they did.
Walls and everything, they discreetly hired it all.
Not only screening with their sound buffers.
That's all I'm getting at, is all this stuff.
It's attenuation, yeah.
There are ways of keeping it all here, but yet, you know, taking out that extra noise level, the site, and all that kind of stuff.
There's gonna be a noise-
But yet keeping it as functional, but keeping it looking halfway decent for the community, I mean, and keeping the noises down.
Right.
I mean, we're doing it on our own buildings, I think, I don't have pictures yet, and I don't know the wording in our final decision, but to take care of this, to minimize things going on, might have to be something looked at.
Yeah, right, towards enablement.
Yeah, I mean, I'm-
Noise or screening of it?
There's no plan, obviously, screening and city change to the building.
Well, but that's where we are now.
Sort of, I mean-
I think it would be a minor modification, and I think if it satisfied the concerns of the butter.
Would be a minor modification to do that.
Screenings and the soundproofing stuff.
And sound, you know, sound deadening.
No, 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 I know what you mean by screening, they do it all the time for HVAC equipment.
To keep the noises down and all that stuff.
Go the full length of the building, one end to the other end.
Yeah, maybe.
These aren't even running yet, right? When do you expect it'll run? So we don't even know if there is a noise issue. I wouldn't expect to do that. Should we ask you what your plan is?
It must be, it must be a manufacturing-
A date, rough and tough.
I would say that they'll-
In the spring when it was first, right now.
All manufacturers do provide a decibel rating.
Yeah, I would think the manufacturers should be able to provide what the decibel level is, and the noise is on those, get those to us, too. You think this was in the scope of our board, like Tracy said, she thinks they should go back to the building inspector, I think this is something that we have to handle.
I think she's looking for clarification as to what the issue is from the building inspector, and wants kind of like a paper trail of what the complaint was when it came in, why, why is he even here before us?
Right, exactly, yeah, that's what I need to know, too.
The good neighbor thing is to probably consider some screening anyway, you know, which is maybe a response.
We do it at our own school, and it's not a house.
There's only a square.
At our next meeting, really, you can, we'll review the-
I'll be in touch with Tim and Mark, and we'll try all again on the same page.
Yeah, perfect.
Or maybe the butter can speak with the applicant and sort it out without us, and we won't have to see Tim again.
Good luck with that.
Not that we don't want to see Tim, but I mean-
I mean, if the applicant and the butter can come to an agreement, so that we can-
You don't think he could come to an agreement with them?
Oh, they're, they're the most-
Okay, okay, okay.
Thank you, yeah, that's enough, all right, so we'll do that, and you'll come and come in one next meeting, and get some of, maybe the manufacturers-
Yep.
Information on what the sound is, and, okay?
Yep.
All right.
Thanks for your plans, I'll pay.
Thank you, yeah, thanks for coming in.
Thanks, I'm sorry to keep you waiting.
Good night, thank you.
All right. This just goes right on, doesn't it?
Never ask that question again.
Obstacle on that.
That fellow's cautious.
I know, I didn't realize this.
Guaranteed builders.
And we didn't actually talk about, did the attorney get back to you with the parking lot and the uses and everything I asked for?
I haven't asked, no.
Guaranteed builders and developers, Pine Sam and Stone, 37, One Street, away. Anybody here for that, Bill?
No, nobody's here, I'm gonna recuse myself.
If I can show that Tracy is recusing herself. Let's, uh-
Look at these guys.
Oh, boy, what a, what a crew.
What is the issue here? They were removing-
This is what the-
And moving soil from the site, and-
The groundwater information we were looking for at the last meeting, that's one of the issues, yeah.
I apologize, I am one short.
Fine.
Am I repressed?
I don't need to-
Please get a share. What are all those colors?
Twenty-six feet, ground water. Ruby House is here, so-
Is this the phone? Oh, this is where the dwellers, on the end?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't want to speak on this.
You thought Mike said this.
Yeah.
Isn't that driving over that?
So this is the redesign based on-
Agent Amen.
Oh, Andy Leonard from Pine Sam, so, based on revised groundwater elevations, that we'll discuss, and so what we did, really at the request of the new homeowner, lowered the site four or five feet, Bill, and did away with the retaining wall on the back lot, back portion of the property, by creating a two-to-one slope from the property line. Go ahead.
Is that similar to what you guys did on the northeast main?
Yeah, on Bosma's.
Yeah.
And Sleepy Hall.
Sleepy Hall, that's what I was thinking.
Both. It's similar in elevation and slope. In elevation, different.
Is that fifty-five feet over there?
I checked it, and it's like fifty-three, just in case it cropped up.
Yep.
So, I checked, checked the, the Aspen. So there, you want to talk about the groundwater, Bill?
Yeah, that's- Well, they're here for three things, as is indicated in their memo, okay? Murray did a great job on the memo.
Thank you, finally.
So, the first thing that's differing from the original approved plan is, as Andy indicated, they wanna get rid of that fifty-five foot high retaining wall in the back and change that to a two-to-one side slope going up to the property line. I think that's a great idea, I never liked the retaining wall. I think it makes complete sense. In doing that, I think they're expanding the footprint of the excavation area, which means that surety may increase by some amount. They've gone over some numbers down below, so you know the quantities, the volume differences, as well as the area differences for, for the restoration. So, the first bullet, sounds great. The second bullet, current groundwater information, including verified monitor well locations, data table, and groundwater elevation grades. So, basically, they put a table on here, and this isn't the plan we're working off of, there's actually another plan, right? Yeah?
We, it's-
You submitted another plan-
Yes.
That has a bigger table.
It does, yeah, and I'm-
Oh, right, this is the one we have.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, you got working plan here?
Okay.
Oh, supposed to make see it here.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, so, so, the issue became, just to give you a little history, we had a hearing process, as we do with all earth removal permits. We have a reg, uh, bylaw that says you have to establish where high groundwater is, and then you can't excavate within ten feet vertically of that elevation.
Yep.
Okay, so you have to maintain a ten-foot separation to high groundwater. So, during the hearing process, we didn't really nail down where that elevation was.
Right.
So, the board kind of issued the permit with some conditions that said, okay, you guys, meaning me and them, figure out where that groundwater elevation is. Then, if there's a planned modification, we'll work with it, okay? Now, I wanna remind you, the public water supply for the town of Douglas is about four hundred feet from the site.
Plus there's a brook across the street.
And the purpose of this is groundwater protection.
Yep.
Okay, that's why you have the separation. So, we did go out there, the operator installed some monitor wells throughout the site, put in some pipes, I went out, witnessed it, we had some discussion about the manner in which to determine the elevation, we, we all agreed on the outcome of that.
Okay.
The problem comes in with this particular test hole location that's located pretty much centrally within the site.
MW one B?
No, to, to the right of MW one B, it's called TP one B.
With elevation five-
Correct, correct. So, if you look up here in the upper right-hand corner in the chart, there's a Test Pit one B, and this is where my issue comes in. That clearly states that water table is at five hundred feet. Now, that predates my discussion with them on where the groundwater was.
So, it's five twenty-four.
They provided that information.
Okay.
If you look at the yellowish lines, that's what the monitor wells established the groundwater, and those are groundwater contours that were developed based on the monitor well locations. Those are the ones labeled MW.
So, that's four ninety-four?
Exactly.
Okay.
So, we have a six-foot, six-foot difference, okay? So, about a month ago, you know, we were having these discussions, and I, I said, look, I don't wanna hold you up, you guys start excavating, but while we determine where that groundwater elevation is, you know, let's, let's stay ten feet above, you know, what we think it is. And perhaps it's miscommunication, but they've excavated down to-
Five oh hundred, five oh five.
Five oh five.
Five oh five, ten feet above the four ninety-four.
Yeah.
I'm taking this one there.
Ten feet above four ninety-four. Well, well, this contour here.
Correct, correct.
But five feet above what's there, uh, under TP one B. So, so the issue I have is, I'm not, I don't have any more documentation on TP one B than what's on this plan.
But yet, the elevation heights are different from what is seen here.
Correct.
Than what is seen there.
Those, those yellow lines were, were only generated using the monitor well data.
Right, but on one B, they're saying elevation is five twenty-four, but here, they're saying it's five hundred, which is the other wall over here, right?
Say that again.
See, that's five hundred.
Yes.
That's five twenty-four.
Well, that's the ground surface elevation.
Alright, but that's one B, right?
That's monitor well one B.
Alright, not Test Pit one B?
That's Test Pit one B.
Okay, alright.
So, so, it's just a data conflict issue that I have, okay? And that's why we're bringing it up here. So, they excavated down to five oh five, that data point is the only one that's showing a problem, that they're within five feet of high groundwater. I'm trying to reconcile that, I've asked them to give me an explanation as to how that is not accurate. As you all know, groundwater fluctuates, it's not a static thing.
But it shouldn't go up.
It can go up, it can go down, no, it can. And, um, the, so, so in fact, you may have had a point in time when it was up higher, I don't know.
But that's the point where you should take it from, the high point.
From a-
Yeah, but, uh, when tools through-
From, from a design perspective, generally, we use the worst-case scenario.
Yeah.
Okay, and we try to maintain that as our design perspective. So, the fact of the matter is, we're now below that ten-foot offset, we're, you know, and again, that's if that's a valid point, I don't even know that, it's what they gave me, okay?
You said they're at five oh five?
Yeah, right now.
We're at-
Yeah, go ahead.
So, we're at five oh five, which we did based on the groundwater contours. So, after a, uh, it wasn't even a lively debate with Bill this afternoon.
It wasn't, that wasn't.
Our position and our firm belief is, what happened is, 'cause that well is out there now, you can go out there and physically see it, it's the one-inch well that Bill requested last year when this process-
This is MW one B.
Correct.
Yeah.
So, what, so we had Miller Engineering do a boring thirty-five feet deep to find the groundwater, so, we're, we're saying that that, so where's TP seven, is that on here, Bill?
TP seven's o, uh, not TP.
I'm sorry, where's TP one?
One B.
One B. So, that, that well was mislocated, and that well is actually MW one B, 'cause they only drilled one well out there, and there's only one one-inch well out there, and it's now been located this spring, right, Bill, when we went out and monitored the groundwater?
Yep.
So, when you plot, so what Miller Engineering did was they drilled a well, and then, I've got the letter here from Miller, that what they did was, and they tested, they dropped it down from ground surface, they didn't shoot any grades, from ground surface, and then said that the groundwater was thirty feet below ground surface. So, now, let's assume that it was, which it was, is my contention, our contention, that it was mislocated and is actually there, and we can go out and look at it if you guys wanna go tonight. And you measure from that existing grade in that location down thirty feet, that groundwater is the same elevation as we determined with Allen Engineering. So, the data point is that, again, our contention, that it was mislocated on the, on the plan.
Does that get amended?
So, what we're, what we'd like to do, we wanna make Bill happy to make you guys, everybody here happy.
It's about the regs, it's not about me.
So, uh, we moved three forty-five there today. I'd like to dig in that exact location, thirty-five feet deep, find the groundwater, and if you plot the groundwater, if you plot, you'll have to, uh, excuse me, cradle-
You mean you're gonna drill? Drill, drill.
I drill, I dig.
Dig, dig.
But if you plot the groundwater contours from here to that well, here to that well, that's how it goes. That's the anomaly created by that location, if it's, if it's in fact there, that the groundwater would come up five feet, go back down. So, what I'd like to do, and then maybe we can come up with a reasonable-
I don't wanna get into the minutia-
No, I know, but-
Of hydrogeology.
We want, we want to prove to the board that that is the well mislocated.
Look, I, I have a simpler solution, okay? And I recommend this, I would suggest that you have your engineer prepare an explanation in writing and stamp it as to what the bust was, 'cause you're saying this was a bust.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, yeah, but you gotta list it up here.
Yeah.
No, I understand that, I'm, I'm not saying mistakes were not made, I'm saying, but these are the facts. I mean, to, to put it on hand and write it all out is, is more than a little mistake. No, I understand that, I-
If that was there and nothing was here-
I can't deny that.
You've gotta have an engineer to talk to our engineer, 'cause in my opinion-
Needs an affidavit, so it's-
This, this has not been handled well by-
No, I understand, I-
You guys, and by us, I don't, this has been a project that has been moving forward a piece at a time, information a piece at a time. That's not believed we should be doing business.
I understand, yeah.
We should have a final plan in front of us before we say, okay, start digging. We should know where the groundwater is before you say, we say, okay, start digging. We should know that there's not gonna be a wall built and it's gonna be a two-and-a-half slope before we say, start digging. I don't like the way this whole thing is being-
No, we don't like to bring this to fruition.
But you, you have, you've gotta get your engineer talking to Bill, our engineer, so that this doesn't continue.
Yeah.
I'm not happy with the way this is turning out. I don't like getting information a bit at a time, then finding out where five people are where we're supposed to be. It should've been all done ahead of time, and it should've been done before you, the excavation started.
We can't turn that time.
So, that's how I'm feeling about it.
You're bringing in equipment right now, though, to start digging. Well, we're, we're-
I don't want you digging down another thirty-seven feet, I wanna know where the groundwater is.
That's not gonna solve the question, but be quite frank with you.
Yeah, that's not, yeah.
And, and I appreciate the effort. What, what I'll get comfortable with, and I can recommend to the board-
That we're comfortable with it, too.
Is if I, if I talk to somebody, so they understand the scope and the problem, and they, they can tell us, in fact, it was an error with the location.
And I want that to be-
And I'm, I'm optimistic that that is the issue.
Okay.
So, that would be my recommendation.
Alright, I would take that recommendation, that, that, that's fine, but I, I don't want this project going forward-
No, I don't, I don't wanna come back again.
I wanna know what's happening, I wanna know everything's on paper and engineered and approved before the project starts.
Cross the K's, dot the I's.
Yeah. This, this is not making me happy at all, I'm, I'm very disappointed with the way we've handled it.
No, I, I, I agree. But I agree with what you're saying, though, before anything goes forward.
So, Bill, you think the easiest way to continue this?
I think a letter could easily solve this, you know, but I need to have a conversation with their engineer.
Yeah.
And hopefully, they'll, they'll find a reasonable solution as to why this happened, and then we'll be good.
Or have them come in and-
The data down here on this table, is that from their engineer, or? Yeah, most of that data was observed by me, obviously, the thing in two thousand and five was not, but the two in two thousand and nineteen were.
But it, it says, the first well is fine, it's well six, seven, and eight that are in trouble, follow the regs.
No.
No, not good.
No, those are all good. All that data is good. I have no problem with that data. We have data up here that's not in the table.
This one up here.
Yeah, it's that one.
It's that one point.
I mean-
Right.
I'm up at this column here, it shows that there's between the groundwater and the, um, the grade.
Some of them are fill areas, so we're not excavating, we're not excavating, it's in a fill area, so it just happened to fall where the-
So, let's assume for a second that we can demonstrate that that shot is a bust.
Yeah.
Okay? I'm, if that's the case, then I'm comfortable saying this plan's okay, and we can move forward.
But should the plan be amended, though?
But if, but if, if we can't come to that point, then, then we've got an issue we gotta deal with.
Yeah. Hi, Boyd, are you comfortable with that?
I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah. I think you need to amend it or take this out.
And also, I need a letter saying why this happened and what happened.
Just can't take white out, cross it up.
There should be a note on this.
I mean, it's been on this plan for how long?
For however long.
You know? So, there's gonna be a reason.
No, no, but, but moving forward, when you do a final plan, right, I mean, when you do a final plan, you'll have the affidavit explaining, but do you want that on the, on the final plan that looks like a miscue? 'Cause it is a, it's a miscue of a plan.
That information needs to be-
That, look, that information purportedly is valid, it's just this location is not valid.
Correct.
And without that being valid, we're not sure where the groundwater at that level.
Right, right, right.
That's, that's a big no-no, in my opinion, 'cause like you said, we're only a few feet from Town Wells, there's a brook across the street.
I agree.
There's a brook that runs to the Town Wells, too, in the back here.
So, can we, can your engineer talks to our engineer, 'cause we're getting information down the road.
Yeah, we don't want, yeah, we don't want.
That's not the way it's supposed to go.
We don't wanna stop it.
No, we don't.
The idea is, if you keep it going, something's gonna happen.
How much more love to ask for that?
So, assuming everything is as we described-
Yeah.
The plan is good with the board, or?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, we get the, yeah, we get the-
Especially the slope, I like the slope, thank you.
You guys wanna make a motion to that effect?
We'll make a motion to whatever we want to endorse or accept. The earth removal, where are we here? Let me get this going.
So, three bullets.
Comfortable with endorsing or not?
It's with-
I don't wanna delay them, I know-
With the exception of-
Mr. Dolphine is anxious to get going, I know that. And my goal is not to delay things, it's, those are the three things, get progress.
I agree, and I don't wanna delay it either, but I don't wanna do this again at another project. I, I, I have, I have, I think I have a legitimate reason to delay it. I'm not happy with the way it's going. It shouldn't, it's only, it's, it's not a big project, it shouldn't be this complicated and this difficult.
You wanna hold off?
No, I, I'll, I'm, I'm counting on you to come through on this. Alright, I, I'll, I'll go along with whatever the board decides, if somebody wants to-
The only, the only reason, making endorsement-
If Bill's comfortable, I'll be comfortable.
Only when Bill is satisfied with the results.
Yeah. The letter from an engineer explaining the bust-
Meaning-
And how it happened.
Just wait till then, then.
And where we are exactly.
Or still approve and bill. Pending that, the plan as submitted is acceptable to the board.
Okay.
So, make a motion to accept the plan as submitted, uh, once, once, uh, town engineer is satisfied with the requirements for groundwater.
And proper amendments on the plan?
And an explanation for the bust.
Yeah, yeah.
It's only for that one, one, excuse me, it's for the one well that was missed.
Well, yeah, as long as everything is satisfied.
He's already witnessed everything else.
TP one.
Yeah.
For guaranteed builders in Pine Sam and Stone 37 Glen Street.
Second. Motion by Mike G, seconded by Mike G. Alright, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain? Motion carries. Okay, alright.
Alright.
Then later on, bro. That's the record show, break the clock back to the table.
Although I do have the onion on here now. Someone's the youngest one anymore.
You what?
Onion.
She's talking about her again.
Next thing on the discussion, Lakeside Zoning D L T A project.
Oh, yeah, this is coming up in the state unit.
Yeah, just an email update, um, you'll see in your package is an email from C M R P C, um, going over what they're saying is gonna be the task with the deliverables for Lakeside Residential Zoning District.
So, there must've been other towns also involved in that?
I believe they have a handful of towns.
A handful of towns that came on board with it?
Oh, yeah.
Nice.
I would assume Hillberry, maybe...
I don't know what towns, North Brookfield, I think.
Yeah.
They're all over the place.
Does that help us out on cost, or pretty much take the cost out?
Well, this is all grant, it's all funded.
This is all grant?
Yeah.
Good.
Taxpayer money.
Well, yeah, yeah, nothing's free, we paid for it, but...
Something coming back.
One dollar.
It's something coming back to us.
What do we do with these, keeping them?
Yeah, we're not, we're not signing anything, we're not signing anything.
No.
What is that?
So who's, who's Ron is? Well, hang on to it until we're not signing, so we have...
I got like some...
I don't remember who Ron is. I remember Trish, I remember Trish and Mac.
We have a couple of E B A applications.
Oh, he's a...
Okay, Bill, we have, uh, Wollam Lake Solar, what's in, uh...
Yeah, um, I was going to update you, you might recall last meeting, we had, uh, talked about splitting those solar decommissioning, uh, consulting services. Well, in doing so, both consultants were bidding kind of economy of scale kind of thing, so they modified their proposals. I ran it by both developers, I have not heard back from Wollam Lake Solar.
Okay.
So I have not issued a notice to proceed on that.
Okay.
Douglas Solar was okay with the modification, so I issued a notice to proceed on that.
Okay.
And they, they gave us a check for it.
Good, perfect.
Did you, did you try to get a...
Yeah, and I did stipulate three weeks, but the back and forth, getting approvals with the changes took a little time, so we're a little behind on that.
We have something from, publicary notices from Webster and from Oxford, I think?
Yep.
Everybody wants to look those, what was it?
All right.
They're, they're in fact, I think.
That's all we got under mail.
On your packet?
Yeah, it's in there.
Waterfront Marys is one of them, for a sign, the other one is Perkowitz Special Permit
Just notice they have to, we do to them, no fire budding towns.
Expand existing use for recycling, processing, or to be greeted, to enhance stormwater management.
I think that one's behind Dr. Donuts.
Yeah.
What's that?
Voucher for C M R P C.
Yep, for next year's dues, probably.
You know any meetings?
We have the Z B A things here.
No.
I miss all the notes, I think so.
Yes.
I don't think we're done.
We should be having a summer party.
All right, I'll pass this around, everybody sign this, please. All right, zoning board.
Yep.
Just for everybody?
Yes.
I read it, it's okay.
That's for you, Les.
You, only you got that.
Yeah, it says, "Don't criticize public employees."
I don't.
That's what it says in there.
I just, I don't...
Yeah, that's number ten.
It's all common sense stuff, pretty much.
That's not that common.
Well, not, don't leave without...
Who wants to take a Z B A?
I think I did the last one.
Who do you think is going to get out of here?
Which one is this? Okay, I'll take this.
Which one, which one is that?
This is Peters Cole Road.
Oh, let's do that one for us, because Leslie's going to step away.
What's that?
Replace both cottages with one...
Who's this Leslie Steven guy?
Leslie, I don't know.
Yeah, you want to explain any of that?
Replace both cottages with one year-round forty-by-twenty-five house, and a two-car garage, upgraded septic system.
Ooh.
Lot eighty-two and eighty-five.
You have no problem with that, don't say how, how high, how many floors.
Thanks, Mike.
What do they want to do, Trace, again?
They want to combine two lots.
Yeah.
And do a year-round, there's two cottages.
Yeah.
Want to do one year-round house, and then one garage on the other lot with, uh, a new septic system. So, I would say, looking for, there is a existing well, and...
And structures that have to be raised?
Yep, two cottages, two seasonal cottages. That's okay, proposed septic area.
Is that on the water?
Um...
Yeah, they'll have to file through Mass Heritage and Age Species.
Build well over here on the side of the road for the septic.
Oh, yeah, here's the water right here.
Yeah, septic will be up here.
Yep, and says proposed septic area, so there's probably a...
The well is probably, the well will be down by the water.
There is an existing well, and another existing well, and the one well is going to be commish, decommissioned per D A P. So, looks like an improvement.
Is there anything, are they going up where they're obstructing a cottage behind it?
There, it's behind...
There's nothing, it's all woods on the side of the road, a lot of them. That's where they put the septic.
Okay, so they're not...
And it doesn't specify... I don't think it specifies the height or anything.
Used to road coming down, there's Peters Cole Road.
It's a special permit, so they don't have to prove, um, relief, because they're reconstructing existing...
The zoning dictates the, the height anyway, so that's already...
Well, they're saying harmony with, no, if somebody was behind them.
Yeah, they had a lake view, like, and also looking at a house.
There is a cottage, though, on the backside, yeah.
There's two cottages, they're both getting...
They're both being raised, so they're not...
I still got the old, first one that's approved?
Anybody have a problem with it?
So they're saying that this is a special permit and a variance.
Is it both?
You can see on the front page.
Well, this just says special permit.
Yeah, but they're coming further away from side yard setbacks.
Are they meeting on setbacks?
I don't know if they're meeting, but they're further back, I mean, this would have a bigger study involved, this would, this cottage is coming down, which, yes, the zoning there. So they're going to be within the zoning here, twenty-five-foot and fifty-foot frontage, so that's a garage, and then this one here, they're...
That's another thing, you're not supposed to have just a garage on one lot, it has to be accessory to the principal structure.
Well, can they not, is Peters Cole a private way that serves other houses?
Yeah, it's a private way, yeah.
It's a dirt road, you won't put on...
So you can't just combine them, because there's a...
They're saying that there's a road in between, they're saying that there's two lots.
Always been that way.
Yeah, so they're not really combining the two lots at all.
You can't.
Across the street from...
Right, right, right.
Who is talking right now?
Leslie.
Um, you know, the garage really is, I guess that's the board's opinion.
Well...
Can't be access, it has, it's accessory structure.
Yeah, but can it exist without a primary?
Nope, principal, it's accessory to the principal structure on the same lot.
Ah.
Definition in our bylaw and definition in building code.
Well, that's a game changer.
But they do exist.
Not brand-new, should it exist?
So that must be the zoning relief, or is that a...
No, didn't list it.
Oh, because that's not zoning, it's within the...
That's something with those lots on there.
Do we have a problem with it, or?
I got no problem with what they want to do.
Yeah. Let, let zoning board handle it.
Yeah.
That and the state.
All right, this is the other one. Who wants this one?
I'll look, there you go.
What's the number? So this is one thirty-one Franklin Street.
Do you have?
Um, Bootso Mall.
Did you get everything back in that package?
Me?
No, I had to print.
Oh, okay, Aaron had some of it, so I didn't...
He had something.
No, he had, he had to print.
Oh.
I gave it back.
Yeah, okay, I'm just making sure.
Who is growling? Do you, Mike?
It's the young guy over here. He's, he's got, he's got the fever.
He's usually...
Side yard setback requires twenty-five, twenty-three. Existing septic house currently twenty-five.
And then we have the, um...
Sequestration for following, twenty-two-foot front yard setback, so they're going to move it back a foot, twenty-three-foot side yard setback. Currently required is twenty-five, they want to go to twenty-three.
Those are all fancy.
And that's four.
Did she give less one? Let's get to something.
I got a little one now. I don't know why. Real awful.
What's that?
Those stormwater.
Is there a plan?
Do we have...
That's not on the list, and minute six eleven. We didn't get the...
I don't really see the house. You see that from the... That would have been nice.
Or from some kind of C E R yesterday.
Yeah, this is stormwater man.
Franklin Street.
Yeah.
You're talking... Put in a new house, take that... Where it's already...
Fifteen inches high.
Right. So they're already, it's going back a foot, so...
What's that Stevens guy want to do?
It's a new house to replace a, looks like a failing decrepit house.
Guy in Florida. Poor guy in Florida.
And it's going to be less intensive, it's moving back a foot, but at least from where it is now. And they're asking for relief on one of the sides, because of the house is being turned from that way to this way, to be normal.
Okay.
So I got no problem.
Yeah.
No objection.
No. So I'll write that in there.
You know what.
Okay, Bill, what's this stormwater man?
I wanted to ask the board if they wanted to participate in reviewing these documents, um, again, you might recall, a few years back, we had some requirements for bylaw changes regarding stormwater.
Yeah.
There's new phases of the EPA permitting requirements. We have a consultant we've been working with on some of the reporting, this is some regulatory aspects of it. So, you know, I sent it to, via email to all of you, if you want to provide review and input, please do, okay?
Do we know if it's improvements, or, like, you know, you know, increasing, you know, from a hundred feet to two hundred feet, or from twenty-five, or reducing from fifty feet to twenty-five feet?
I haven't gone through, through the bylaws yet, the proposed bylaws yet.
That thick.
Yeah.
Is it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Adam has a copy of it.
Can I ask a question, Leslie?
And...
Just a special permit, right?
Yes. So, so, you know, I welcome input, and I'm very sensitive to, you know, what's happened in the past, so...
Okay.
This is, again, this is the board's opportunity to have input and direction on this, so...
Has there still been a, a number of towns that have, they formed...
I can even see if the engineer wants to come in and do an overview and a presentation, if you want that.
You should. How about a summary of the changes?
And, um, yeah, most simplified, least regulatory to meet the requirements.
Right.
One piece of, one page.
Yeah.
I'm telling you, Tracy, it's that thick.
Yeah, yeah, but, but that one, is that the old playbook, you know what I mean, or is that the modifications?
We, we want the Cliff Notes.
Exactly.
Cliff Notes adopted in our bylaws.
I'll ask him if he can come in and do an overview for the board.
Thank you.
You can ask questions, and in, in advance of that, see if we could get a little one-page summary of what this is about.
Yeah, or the changes, some of the changes, yeah.